Let's go to work. All right. Um, I have a word prayer. Thank you, God, for all your lessons. We're grateful. We ask you, Father, to give us wisdom and over our footsteps in what would be helpful to our county, to our citizens, and to our country and state. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. All right, I think you need to go first?
I can.
Or you need to go first. Go ahead. We got Shane Christian here, but I don't know if Lee's coming to talk. I don't know if Lee's coming.
Lee is at a conference.
Oh, that's right, he's in New York.
And he's, he's gonna sneak in first.
Come on, Shane. Y'all know Shane, he's with East Alabama Planning Commission?
Yes. I work in the transportation program. I oversee it, manage it, and I work with each one of the local governments and participate in one of the eleven. Participates in the program over six county area. And I know Marty passed away in February. And I've spoken with Lee on several occasions about moving forward. Something last week, he was telling me that he just had trouble finding a driver. And he was kind of at a point where he didn't know what else to do. He followed all the iron procedures that were given to him, to the county. And he was kind of out of walls. And I said, well, Lee, I'm lucky to keep looking. I know that's not your job. You know, you've got other things to do. And we all have so many hats in there. And I don't want to put this on you. But I will, you know, ask him to continue to, to look and move forward. And that way we can get a driver in there that's up to that caliber than Kevin Martin and Curtis before him that could really take a hold of it, do it, and do it well. And really, overall, have that program, you know, under, under the driver's wing. And, you know, Lee had kind of let me know that, Commissioner, maybe I thought for just discontinuing the program. I wanted to come over and trace some of the questions that you have. And to try to persuade you to keep it and move forward. We have, I sent out an email to our case managers. And one case manager responded, she does have two clients here in through the county that were using the program and still need it for both nutritional groceries and medical, medical payments. And I feel myself, there are age lines that are, calls are reported to be through that age line. I feel about two, three calls a month from someone, you know, randomly. Here in through the county that has asked about the transportation program and even, both here in Heflin, gentleman over at Ramburn, a lady just coming north of Fruit Hurst. So, you know, there is a need. And I hope that we can continue to do that driver search and move forward.
Y'all have questions for Shane?
I asked Lee for, his secretary is keeping up with the calls that we've gotten since Marty. And he was supposed to get them reported, but he hadn't yet, he was working on it. Just to see what the interest was, you know. I mean, I don't know if they, if they taking two people a week before, you know, we stop or if it's ten people. You need to know that information to make a good, educated guess anyway.
Yeah, through, for this fiscal year, October through February, obviously February was very trudging in its service. But you guys provided 163 trips. That doesn't tell you anything about, you know, whether they're running around here in Heflin or a trip out to get somebody in a, through those corners of the county. And certainly doesn't tell you where they were going. But you get 563 trips for the five first ones of the year.
I guess Lee has spoken with you because, I don't know, back the first of the year, I had a couple of people in my district that asked about going into Georgia. And Lee thought we couldn't do it. But I guess he talked to you or talked to somebody. And then he got back to me and said that we could. So I don't know if those two people, you know, were willing to sign on, but...
Yeah, you can go into Georgia or any other state, actually. As long as you have your minimum insurance requirements that that state requires. That's the only requirement of the program. There's no paper or agreements we have to sign or anything like that. But we just, you know, you haven't made the insurance requirements of the state yet. It may be different than what our, our...
And that contract is up next month?
The training contract?
Yeah.
It's a fiscal year contract. Honestly, I think we're in the second of three.
Okay.
There's a three-year contract in place, so I think we're in the second of three. I could be wrong. I don't think we're in the third of three.
It's hard for me to keep up with everybody. I didn't know if it was a one-year contract or what.
We went to three years simply because they're very static contracts. They don't change year to year.
If it's a three-year, it probably is the end of the first year.
Right, I think it's the second.
That's what I could hear.
Yeah, it's the seventh, yes, sir. I don't know, good answer. I hope, I guess anybody does. We just pursue going forward, trying to find somebody.
Just bring that again.
Yeah, we had some issues there in Anderson, you know, field positions too. It's not, I don't think you guys are unique in the situation of trying to find a driver. It's hard. Usually you find a good fit and they, what do they say, they'll be forever. You know, because they enjoy it, they enjoy the people, they enjoy the freedom of it, you're out and about, you know. It's a rather hands-off program administratively, specifically because it just kind of works smoothly on its own. And it's, like I said, once you get a fit, it usually lasts, lasts you a long time. There are drivers in Anderson that have been there since way before. I've actually even been there with East Alabama. And so it's really just, it's really just finding that one lady or gentleman that wants to move forward with that.
We'll have a meeting in a couple of weeks and Lee will be back and we'll, we'll have a discussion about it.
Okay, and I'll be happy to come back anytime you guys want to or ask you any questions individually if something pops in your head. And you said, ah, I'm sure they'd ask me that, you know. Judge Robinson certainly knows how to get in touch with you. You can always call me or email me at East Alabama. And you guys know how to get in touch with you too. And like I said, if anything just pops, just weird in your head, you're like, man, I'm sure they'd ask me that. Just ask me. And I'll be as honest and as forthful as I possibly can. And like I said, we just, yeah, we're really happy for the program to continue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Thank you, God. Appreciate you coming this far. Of course, of course. Anytime. And thank you guys so much for being on.
Sir, have a good day.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Crystal.
I'll be quick. In the last 9-1-1 meeting, we discussed the $46,000 grant that I got for salary benefits, compensation of employees. And so I am formally asking if you guys would consider a resolution. Instead of putting another full-time, I know that overall the commission didn't seem comfortable with maintaining that from year to year. And so I tried to find another avenue to use that. And I came up with the shift differential pay. So night shift would be paid 50 cents more than day shift. So if you want to work night shift, we'll give that 50 extra cents. This is something that the commission will not have to pay for. It will come solely out of this grant funds. And again, we got $46,750. It appears to be about $1,500, $1,200 to $1,500 per employee each year. And there's usually, of course, two on each shift, so that's four night shift employees that we have. But I got an email from one of the state board employees. And I have to get those grant funds signed in by May the 10th. So if that's something that we feel comfortable with, I can go ahead and sign those documents and get them in. If not, we will lose those grant funds.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to that.
We just need to do a resolution for a 9-1-1?
We don't, the Senate did.
Everybody do that? You gotta have it by May the 10th, though?
I have to sign the grant documents by May the 10th.
Or lose it.
Or lose it.
So that's frightening. This would be something you did in a 9-1-1 meeting, not a commission meeting, would you? Which way's it gotta go?
9-1 meeting.
Can we do an emergency meeting or something, or? We could, possibly.
I can reach out to Adam, which is the Assistant Director, I think is his title. And I will ask him, I'll tell him our meeting, what our meeting date is and see if... Because usually on their grants, they release the grant funds and they go directly into our accounts. It's not a reimbursed type thing. But I can ask him if he can wait until then. If he can't, what would, what would it look like if we, if you guys didn't approve that? Could I just, could I just contact the M and M, you know, do away with the documents? Or I'll see anyways what he, what he can work out for us.
I mean, I personally don't see an issue with that. Until you told me the other day, I didn't know they didn't give a night shift premium or something. No, I just assumed they did.
Well, I hate it just to let the, the funds go waste. And I tried to figure out some way. And each agency, of course, around us, you know, they all do the shift to pay. So I felt like that was a good, a good compromise.
I feel it will get approved, but, you know.
Like I said, I'll contact Adam if that's okay. And I should have an answer more. If he says that we can't do that, I'll let, I'll let him know and then...
I'll call special meeting or something and... Well, you got the grant. If, if we did, if I signed it and went forward, what would happen from there?
Usually it takes, usually it takes several weeks. Like I said, they, they primarily do the transfer of the fund right into directly our account. It's not a reimbursed type deal. So if I had to sign them, I could sign them, or you could sign them. We could get them in and then I'll tell him if it's not approved, would you guys be willing to take those back out? And he just needs, he said they're presenting it to their board and they have a number on what's been used and what's not. Because they'll reallocate those, of course, if...
Do they give you the total all at one time, or is it?
Yeah.
Well, I'll just wait and sign it. And then if we guys, we put it onto a vote on it, and if it didn't pass...
Okay, all right.
But I'll let you call them too. But I'll sure not pass them.
Yeah, I can't see it either. If we got money, we don't want to give it to them.
All right, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I think Emily, you, did y'all have some questions for Emily? I think she was...
Can I say something and then she can answer a question?
Okay.
Or whatever, no, that...
Okay.
Okay. I want a resolution on the meeting to, I think everybody's kept on the, do step raises. And our payments on the jail, which is $215,460 a year, ends this month. So we've got, we freed up that much money. And I personally think, and I spoke with Emily and Crystal and Lisa, we've all talked about this. And Roger was involved. But the money's freed up. I mean, if we don't do it now, you know, I don't see any time in the future where we would have the money. So I just ask that a resolution be made for that. And also a resolution, if it passes, to task our attorney with updating the handbook.
Okay. So I figured you business most likely?
Yeah, it'll be fine.
All right, good. Do you have any questions for Emily concerning this? Emily, you maybe give us any input?
I don't think so. I think everyone received the email, it was God. Got the proposal on there as to how it would work and who would be eligible and the cost.
There's probably one thing that's not up here that I just caught this morning. The Department is the one that's gonna decide whether or not the person gets the raise. Because I would call it a performance raise now, really early in the day, but you can only move up one slot. Y'all got a name for it, but...
It's just one step, you're right.
One step, okay, but...
To find that in there.
But the resolution, Emily and Lisa can get with Jason and come up with a resolution that says all that. And then you'll have to amend the handbook, so, if it passes.
Because the estimated cost is based on one step per employee.
I mean, $70,000 a year, that's sort of hard. I think it's sort of hard not to go ahead and do that.
All right. Pete, we're good. Sharon, you got anything?
I'm gonna ask about the subcoast and other, the 07 top hole that drill high mileage and some account which use. And then that money they placed back in that line out on 550, we'd use it to upfit and maybe purchase another vehicle with a layer panel.
Is that why they're not only drilling?
We can do it that way, but that's a option.
And though, I forgot to tell you, the last few sales that we've had, we've got $0.89 million. Probably like, I think, three sales, I think that's what we done. We've got $0.89 million.
Not all the sales were on one-year purchase.
Yes, and that's what I'm saying too. I said I got that part of the Ford Explorer. They emailed Patrick back, he responded today. You know, I said we were gonna make a rebuttal. Well, they come back and they upped it by $3,000 or $3,000. And they said that was all they were gonna do, you could either take that or take the Explorer. So, so we took the money. It was $43,934.87. So we took that. And I believe, pretty sure that with that, that we made off the last sales plus that. I believe that this one covered the cost of that top one we just got.
But all the upfitting and all, we have about 53 in that one, didn't we?
Yeah, it's 50, it's 50 something, yeah.
Are y'all, can y'all say what you think?
Yeah, I think they used some of the whites, yeah. Some of the whites, especially on the inside, I wonder if they were sabotaging some of that. Yeah. Probably that $8,000 will cover the, the cost of upfitting it and maybe striping it and all of that too, so...
Was you gonna check on the insurance and see if we could give insurance that would cover the radio and all that crap?
They said that what we need to do is add that to the volume of what we're covering each time. So when we get the tone, when it's all been upfitted, we need to put the insurance company, you know, and they can up that amount.
Well, you have to have an itemized list, the public payers, right?
I imagine that they'll probably just ask for the invoice on it, like the... I haven't spoken specifically about that, but I would...
It's something everybody's known.
It's something, okay.
Man, I spoke to Roger a little while ago. Like Ramburn's court system in this amount of late first, they no longer have a special court. I didn't know if any of y'all talked about Ramburn, maybe about doing what Heflin does, agree to the housing fee, I guess.
I talked to the mayor four, five weeks ago and I, I think he wanted to do pretty much the same.
I don't get it.
He told me they had to talk to their attorney and all that and everything else.
So I guess we'll type up a grid and send it to them to see if they, I guess, say at their next meeting, I guess.
Yes. I'll reach back out to the mayor and see.
I had a little as to, I need that, that's supposed to be in the May timeframe. So you know what, when you change, will we build them?
Yeah.
But not till we get an agreement.
Agreement, yeah.
We could probably just take that, we'll handle it very well, just change the date. Change the date. I'll, I'll talk to the mayor, I wish I were, you're gonna talk to him too.
Yeah. And this one, I have one more thing, of course. We ran out of line and been swapping jobs in January. Well, I'm gonna promote within side for line jobs, which would be calling to have a certified jail, or a certified jail administrator. So I'll be just as far as not walking in reports. If we have any arrests that need to be done, so the phone's not in, he can handle that. Anything happens in the back, it's all, it can be investigated, he can handle all that too. So that, Ben said, he's going back to this across training, you know, towards the end of the year to try to, you know, learn some of all these stuff. So I just wondered, just going back there about hiring to cover his position, can we go ahead and start looking? We're checking the next academy if we do, if we hired a non-certified. The academy starts in August and we have to have a packet, a package back in, in June. If we went that route. The next academy, I think, in January, I believe when the next one will be. And it would be, you know, that's the, probably around November. No later than November, hiring, trying to hire a next person.
So when, when would you, when would hiring be, be able to get into there?
If we had one of this next academy, we'd have to have them hired in June. Just the packet would have to be turned in no later than the last week of June, make sure we reserve a spot. And too, it's just going to, if they got all their stuff, they have to get, you know, they have the work keys. Of course, they got the psychological and all that too. If they had to have the work keys and got to schedule that through, I guess we're still, I guess, in state, with the work keys, yes. Or Jax, I don't believe Jax, they're going to have to.
Do a resolution and we discuss a little bit of ideas.
I wanted to add that to contingent of regular business.
I think they need to eat this, since the board is 14 and Emily's not here. So we probably need to have a discussion about it.
And this is gonna reach, the resolution's gonna need to hire someone else to replace them?
To make up our college position.
Which is a day you never like.
To try to get him in, whoever, if it's a, if it's some...
Not a certified, yes.
Okay, now you gonna need a resolution to, to move him to train the lane, or do we just do that, or?
I think we probably need to do that, just move him over to cross train, yeah.
I'm ignorant for all this. The interdepartmental transfer, we got a lot of them on that?
We do. And I think it's a little different, because of both the jail and of course deputies under the sheriff. So I think it's different for y'all than it is if someone goes from 9-1-1 to the private office or to a, yeah, to a completely different department. I will research that a little further and find out for you. But I think you almost want, I mean, they're two parts, two different budgets. But as far as personnel manual is concerned, when it talks about sheriff's office, it talks about all of y'all. So let me research that a little further and I'll find out for you.
One question, is there opening that line, you can hire exclusively because of the loss, the retention or position? If you have a warrant, you have to do a last, like service.
Officer's officer position?
Well, it would still be paying.
It's a deputy, yes.
It'd be a deputy position.
We don't have a deputy position in the jail.
Well, we need, we need a, well, I'm not, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about hiring a person to replace Clay as a deputy. So you need another deputy position, because he's still gonna be in the deputy position until he gets changed. So you have an extra deputy, basically, for training.
But he's, Lane is a 45 year. So he never goes through a senior law. He's the same as his clerk.
Oh.
Every, yeah, everybody in the sheriff's office, yeah. Everybody in the, yeah.
Essentially, that's why it's a little different.
No, Paula basically talks to us. About Paula.
Paula's also a clerk.
I, I told her, yeah.
But Lane is...
He just plays the service.
I'm trying to figure out the budget, because I'm just gonna go ahead and...
Why did you take a temporary position?
My temporary position. It's still a judgmental, residential chart, we have, as, for, so, so, and that doesn't always happen. A lot of times we don't have that, if we have an employee that's claiming an employee's money, we don't have a, an overlap there.
And in terms of, we have a starting point and ending point. As far as it starts, it's that, everybody handles this, they do it temporarily.
Ideally, if they do it with a new budget, they're probably less complicated, but...
Right.
Sounds like you...
So temporary position, basically?
So the whole residential chart?
Yes.
It's just a temporary, what's that?
We'll put down any business. Everybody agree with that? Okay? Any other questions?
I do. Somebody asked me this other day, I'm gonna ask you. Do you have any idea about how many tracking tickets y'all write a month? Or we all even write?
I can tell, we write a few, I can tell you.
I mean, I have a, this bitch went past me and I said, hey, sheriff does his own thing. I think all, all of the money, I was...
I would tell you, a lot of our tickets, our, I say our regular D V guys, if they're working regular shift, they don't write many tickets unless you really, really just, you know, doing something stupid. We do have a lot of, like, I guess it's called like a step track, which is kind of like a particular ticket. And they do work that. And they, they do require contacts, tickets and stuff like that. I guess, they require so many per hour for that, that time or the money to give us.
What about your roadblocks? I get a lot of calls about the roadblocks, which I'm good with. I, I, but did, did you, the sheriff department do the roadblocks or the random P D's that wrote them?
We, we, they'll follow your package, we have to approve them. You know, watch the check, we'll go through them. And then sometime it may be with Ramburn, it may be we'll have one. But most of the time they're out in, out in the county somewhere, that's what we tell them. You know, everyone's got their own, they're, they're on. You're dead, you're gonna need to get a county. So we kind of do it like a county, unless there's something there needing...
I, I used to do the crossroads down there, and I still do it.
Yeah.
I think you should.
Yeah.
I had the time, we stopped time during COVID.
But I will, I'll meet you on my own.
Hey, just, just give me something best of mine or something, so I can answer guys for a second.
Any other questions? Thank you. Ms. Porter, do you have anything?
Well, we're got just a little bit of collections left to get for y'all for 2023 taxes. So I'll get you some real good numbers after the tax sale's done about how much money the commission received from taxes, from property taxes for the year. We have three parcels that'll be sold, new parcels that'll be sold with tax sale. So it's a relatively low tax sale. Took us a long time to get here. We'll, we had a lot of people that waited to the last minute to pay. But we're, we're down to three. So that's always a good day when we have very few to pick from. But it will be a tax lien sale tomorrow at 10 o'clock. So open to the public. If you want to be a bidder, you have to be there that day. Unfortunately for you all, you can't come bid at my sale because it's a conflict. But for the, for, you, you could go, I think, to another county and do that. But you can't do that in our county, so... But that's, that's where we're at. We should have all the money dispersed by the end of May. It takes us a little bit of time between the tax sale and us doing final settlement to get all of our numbers right. And then we'll write that last check to y'all. And then start again in October. Just in time, right?
Thank you.
Yes, I'm counting.
All right, I think that's got everyone up. They see you.
Uh, we have a couple of things to note with me. He has changes to transportation lanes without the need of, we had them on the agenda. What was, I believe it was on the near area, but it was just a road change. I think he said it was yours. We'll change to 45. Get, get up 76 to 45, we're able to get $49. The other change to forty-two, get, get up six inches to forty-nine, we're able to get forty-nine dollars. Is that okay on the contingent?
Yes, anybody else agree with it?
Rich, Rich, I'll leave to make sure he didn't just, cause line two and line three is exactly the same to the team. It's so hard to get two road projects to come out. I was wondering if you might have missed talking about.
It's possible he did that, or it's also possible that he just had to find out a amount of money and thought, I'm just gonna divide it exactly equally for women too. Uh, I could ask him, no?
No.
Okay. Estimated cost, estimated cost coming up exactly.
Well, and I knew that in the past, who just said that he can change that, he could change every week if he did too, so.
Yeah.
I don't know, he's just gotta get it down to a better estimate. I'll ask him about it though. Um, also, um, let's see, let's look here. This is transportation thing. And then, um, there was an allocation agreement that I've already had. The chairman signed, our county attorney asked us to go ahead and put that on our, um, agenda. Just a resolution on the agenda and it's, um, he had to go ahead and sign it because it had to be in by May fifteenth. At our next meeting, it's March the twentieth, but it's the same opioid agreement that he's already, already passed to, that he could sign. It's just about the allocation portion, but they didn't, apparently did not include that with the paperwork on the original go-around. And it's just so that the state can allocate between the counties the opioid agreement. So we can put that on contingent. And then the last payment on the jail, this transcript already mentioned, will be in May and that'll be done. It's about a half, it's a little over half our normal payment, which is about, our, our regular payment would have been seventeen thousand, nine fifty-five. And it's ninety-eight, ninety-nine hundred, something like that, we're totally paid off on that. And then, um, of course, you had mentioned that already, I just had it on my list. And then also I will be out starting tomorrow, will not be back until Monday, because I have ACA A conference, which starts early Wednesday morning, visiting until late Thursday, so I'll leave tomorrow and come back Friday, but I won't be here till Monday. But I will be in contact and will, I will have my laptop with me, so if there's something that needs to be done, I'll know. I start a little hard time to do that. But that's all I have.
Y'all have any questions?
You probably already asked this, but I needed to ask you something on this step raises that you have.
Okay.
Uh, is you, this is only for one year, correct?
Yes, that would be the cost.
Can you give us something that's gonna give us a cost for five years?
I can do that.
Because I know it's not gonna stay like this and we're gonna see how much that's gonna affect us overall.
I can do that, and of course, if we do, if any cola raises are passed in that time, that changes it because the cola raise goes into the step and it, it pushes everything up, but yes, I can, I can pull that up.
Cause I, I know this, this is just for one year.
It's for one year, yes.
Any other questions? Y'all have anything, y'all on the agenda?
The only thing I'd like to, um, talk to the commission about is, uh, something that we may need to be looking into is looking into the ID board, creating our county line ID board instead of a city ID board. Um, just something, I think Emily's been doing some research, maybe taking it a little bit deeper in it, but it's something.
I'm surprised he's not here.
Well, he's at.
I know, that's what we're gonna talk about.
He's at a training, you know.
Engineer.
Engineer, he's an engineer and he's gonna sit in the one that Lisa's going to too. So, uh, uh, let's just be trying to get as much information we can on ID board, what, what it's gonna take, if we can do it, and what it's gonna take to do it.
We can do it.
Well, we tasked Emily and Roger to come up with some figures.
To come up, or is that called if we can, because you know, we've already got that contract. We've got to know if we can pull out of that and go to our own. Those are, those are questions that's gonna have to be answered.
About thirty days, let's see, you know.
Yeah, but we gotta make sure that we can, you know, it's just something I think that we need to be looking into.
We are looking.
We, um, I know, you know, I haven't had anyone to reach out to my two businesses or three, but two of my main plans, nobody's ever even reached out to me. And I'm concerned about that. And I just think that we need to look at it.
I don't have a problem. I'll put it against the lifetime.
Anything else? I know there, we missing a board member in what I saw.
Is that one time?
Don't, don't we need, we have a board vacancy?
We have a board vacancy in, uh, is that hospital? There's, there's one.
Yeah. It's the hospital board and Roger still has one to point.
I think it is hospital. I think it's on the list right now.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, are we ready to go home or you got something?
Let, let me, I don't want a resolution, but I want to throw something out there for everybody to think about. We made June tenth the holiday, thinking that the state had done the same and the state didn't because the governor just took it on herself to do it. When the legislature, if the legislature doesn't pass that, which I don't, I think you got one more day, then there's nothing. And, uh, we need to go back and look at that.
Okay.
Uh, I don't think we need to be doing something that the state don't do. Uh, maybe we can turn into a floating holiday or whatever, but we need to be thinking about, maybe have a discussion after the legislature closes.
Well, we took away one holiday to make that, didn't we?
We took away Jefferson Day's day and Confederate Memorial Day, and they're both state holidays. And we gave one floater and June tenth.
Didn't we report back?
Well, I agree with Terry, the, the government has not made it legal yet, so. We need to see healthily, then make a decision and we'll know.
I may be wrong, but I think you got maybe two days.
Two days. I thought they called five more. Is that Lane? Lane keeps up with it too, don't you?
She's the two.
What's that?
How many days left within the?
Three, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll be meeting tomorrow afternoon, probably Thursday, and then we'll have one more day, unless they'll do three this week.
I guess you were thinking like this week and one day or something.
Yeah, I was just, one more.
I mean, they're gonna stand.
I think they've got twenty-seven days, so that's your guy, twenty, twenty-nine, thirty.
Okay. Is that it?
I'm good.
You want to go, what we gonna vote on quick?
Contingent agenda, we got several items for the sheriff's department, um, the county transportation plan and then also the, uh, opioid allocate, allocation, uh, document. And then on the new business, we have step raises, um, task attorney, attorney to update the handbook, county handbook. Um, also replace, replacing a deputy will require the, um, well, that's one resolution by itself. And then also organizational chart that goes with that, so just four items on the new business. And to three on contingent, and also one on nine one one, meaning to, for her grant, except for.
You're gonna ride it with the DVDs of temporary until.
Yes.
The changes of the minutes.
Right.
Okay.
And you're going to play Terry, Chris, to make sure she don't lose that money?
Yeah, I'll sign that document and then we'll decide what we're gonna do.
And I don't know what situation is what we can do, but that, this kind of reminder of opioid allocation is gonna be signed. And if I had some verdicts, we.
But just on there.
They'll ratify them.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't know if we can decide, but we, we're hard for a lot.
Did A C C A ever come up with some guidelines? They were gonna put out some guidelines, I'm not saying that, man. Do you understand what you need now?
They just, I think they're just staying in the process, I hope.
So you said they were gonna come up with some guidelines, I didn't know.
I've not heard of it, I've asked other moms. Supposed to make this simple.
Alright, everybody good? Will you're done?